To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Board members, the agenda has been distributed. Are there any amendments to the agenda? See, none. I'll stand approved as distributed. In your packets, you received the minutes of the January 8th, 2019 Scott County Board meeting. Any corrections or additions to those minutes?
Madam Chair, I'll move the minutes.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the January 8th, 2019 Scott County Board meeting. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion to carry. Next, we'll move on to recognition of interested citizens. This is a time on the agenda for anyone to come up and speak about an item that is not on the agenda. Time is limited to five minutes per person or subject. If you have something you'd like to talk about, please approach the podium.
Madam Chair, I'll absolutely say.
Sounds good.
One's in trouble. Madam Chair, fellow commissioners, staff, fine folks of Scott County, I have a dedicated service award today for somebody in this room. I think there might be a little gift in there, too, so it's really good. So, we're going to start out by saying that this person, I'm going to ask a couple of questions or make a couple of statements, and the field is going to narrow very quickly, but indulge me. This person was sworn in in January of 2009. Okay, we're getting a little narrow. He serves as chairman 2011, 12, 13, 14, and 2018, and was vice chair in 2017. Anyone think they might know who this person is? The guy that looks guilty up there, come on up here, Commissioner Wolf. Come on up.
I thought, was anybody else in the room? I said, no.
Got a nice certificate. County of Scott, state of Minnesota, in recognition of dedicated service to the county of Scott from January 6, 2009, to January 6, 2019. Well done. You're a dedicated man, for sure.
Thank you.
There you are. Now, we need about an eight-minute, no, five-minute speech. Five-minute speech, and we'll be on our way.
No speech, just thank you.
All right. Congratulations. Thank you for that presentation, Commissioner Beer. Any other interested citizens? If not, then I'd like to introduce Chris Harder, our Quality Improvement Manager, who's going to lead us in our Scott County Delivers Program for this month. So, Chris, take it away.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. This morning, we're going to talk about economic development, and certainly, we all share an interest in our communities and our citizens being economically viable and thriving. And I think that folks that put together the materials today did a very nice job of laying out how the Board has considered economic development, like, over the last 10 years, and planned for that, and in some ways, really credited you for some of the progress that has been made in that area. In a couple of weeks, we're going to start talking about new board strategies and new priorities. And so, as you're hearing the material today, we hope that you'll consider how this information helps you in planning as we go forward on transportation, and land use, and job creation, all those topics. We'll be certainly talking about them more over the next couple of weeks in those workshops. I think we want to talk a little bit about how do we, as government, create the right environment for jobs? And I think the panel's got a nice, a nice amount of detail about that today, so that'll be helpful to hear. And we're also interested if there are other places where you need more information about these topics as we go into those planning workshops, and we'll be happy to collect that in the interim. The only last piece, I'll say, is that housing is certainly a part of economic development. The Scott County Delivers Conversation next month is specific to housing and homelessness. And so, we're going to talk a little bit about housing today, but largely, we're going to save that for next month. So, just so you're aware of that, that piece. With that, I think, I'd like the panel to introduce themselves first, please.
Danny Lenz, Deputy County Administrator.
Jen Schwartz, Health and Human Services.
Steve Jones, Office of Management and Budget.
Brad Yugo.
Chair Brad Davis, Planning and Resource Management Director.
Carrie Wmet, Economic Assistance Director.
Lisa Fries, Transportation Services Director.
Perry Malchron, Enterprise Business Technology.
Cindy Geis, Community Services Director.
Stacy Crakes, I'm the Business Development Director with the Scott County CDA.
Barb, I think you're going to do just a quick overview, a few minutes, and then Jen's going to start out our questions this morning. Actually, I think you did a great job with you. Did I take your stuff? Sorry. Yeah, no, we're pleased to be here today. I think we've had a lot of good successes that relates to economic development, and as the packet indicates, we've seen significant job growth in recent years. But that didn't happen overnight. I think that took decades of planning and strategic investments that got us to this point. So, today, we're hoping that this conversation can be a little reflective and celebratory on what we've achieved, while also looking to engage in a conversation about what we need to do as we move forward. I think, as we were trying to look at, what does the scope of economic development mean for this conversation, and for the purposes of this presentation, I think we started looking at, how much really does it impact all of what we do? I think it can be pretty far-reaching when you look at the goal of Scott County to have safe, healthy, and livable communities, and even the vision of live, learn, earn, which is to have stable, and to have individuals that are stable, educated, connected, and contributing. And then, I looked also at our, we have really important partners with the cities that have played a really critical role in making sure that we've gotten to this point. But, for the purposes of this conversation, we want to look at business and workforce development, land use, such as planning and zoning, and tax incentives, infrastructure, transportation, fiber, and housing. And to Chris's point, too, we don't want to go into a deep dive on housing, but did want to highlight that there's some pretty, there's some gaps that we're concerned about, especially as it relates to our labor force, and our ability for employers to attract and retain the quality workforce that they need. And I think, just one more point that I think we want to make before we turn it back over, is that I think during a time when we have, at our federal level, we have, like, looming deficits, we know at a state level, we've seen county cost shifts that happen either intentionally or inadvertently. This is potentially one area that allows us to control our own destiny. So, are there ways that, of course, we can create the conditions, as Chris said, that allow for that economic prosperity to continue, and really allow us to achieve our mission in the long run? So, that will, that's over.
Thanks.
Okay. We'll start on page 24. It's kind of a big umbrella question, but one of the biggest challenges that I see in this, in the coming years, will be the aging population, more retired folks and less available for work. What do we do as a county to prepare for this?
So, we actually are one of the youngest counties statewide, and really, our numbers, you know, if you look at this slide, and then also, if you look at slide 22 on the growth in our population, you know, even though the growth has been in our over-55-year-old area, if you actually look at the same chart on a statewide level, it's actually negative for growth in that area. So, I think that we have an opportunity, and especially some of the great work that a lot of our school districts have been doing with, for example, the city of Shakopee, or Shakopee Public Schools, with their, their sector-based programming and their academies, it really provides an opportunity that how do we hook our youth up with local opportunities, and really create that business-to-education partnership that allows for some of that pipelining to occur. I think, no doubt, we're going to have a labor shortage for now and into the future, but are there strategies around trying to keep our local youth local?
I'll continue on for page 22. Like you said, this is showing the overall growth over the past decade, and it is showing the greatest growth in the older ages. What do you feel are the biggest obstacles from keeping the younger ages from coming here?
I mean, one piece is, is housing, like we highlighted at the beginning here. I think, after, in just meeting with a couple of employers last week, and even engaging in a Scott County conversation with some of our managers here, I think it's a struggle with how are we going to be able to maintain and attract people without having some housing options for individuals kind of across that spectrum. So, that's one potential challenge. I think also, we've looked to and talked a lot about post-secondary options here within the county, and having something like that local that allows us to train a workforce that helps meet the needs of our local employers is going to be important for us, and can potentially be a way to attract local youth here as well, or at least working age adults.
And just to add on to that, if you look at page 32, particularly to those kids that are coming out of college, and out of the universities, and they're coming to an area where they want to locate and start building their career path, starting a family, they also want some level of affordability. And as you can tell within this grid, the availability of houses at that entry-level area is just minimal at best, and the ones that do come on the market generally get stuck in a bidding war. So, if folks have the ability to come in and pay cash, you know, that they're going to get the house much, much more frequently than these kids who need financing. So, just to kind of piggyback on what Barb has said, is that not only is the availability of housing and the affordability, but how long does it stay on the market to allow them to be competitive, to be able to acquire some living quarters?
What do you see the county's role in that?
Well, as you know, and most everybody else knows, that the biggest amount of development, particularly at the entry-level home, is going to be within the municipalities. So, I think all that we can do is kind of work collectively with the municipalities and some of the developers, and strategically try to plan out and help them with identifying areas where we could collaborate and partner on some level of, of entry-level homes. It's difficult in this community, because, again, we are a very affluent county, and our prices for land are extremely high, so how we can make that work is really going to be, we need to have that conversation with our cities in order to partner. Our townships, and Brad could probably speak more to this, are, it's really difficult to be able to build these types of homes in the townships, because land is just so expensive. And depending upon how close they want to be to freeway access, particularly if they're a young professional, most of them want some way and ease to get to work. And, of course, along those corridors is where your land values are really going to be, within the prices.
Maybe I'd just add, too, from the perspective of the CDA, we do work with a lot of different cities, and as these different workforce housing-type projects come up, the CDA is approached by developers looking at constructing those types of projects throughout the county. They have to go through a process where they apply for tax credits, and it's a very competitive process. Where the CDA has helped with that, on behalf of the entire county, is to step in and help with some gap financing, or some long-term loans, to help move some of those projects forward. So, thankfully, we have seen some, I guess, some good projects come through in the last couple of years that are now being built, or are just starting to be built. But there's still a demand that we need a lot more than what we have and what we are building right now.
So, for me, on the other side of achieving our goal of 50 by 30 is not just bringing in new residents, but also getting our residents to stay here. When we look at slide 26, it talks about resident job skills versus the available local jobs gaps. And what I see in a number of these areas, these aren't the types of firms that always, depending on the area, move locations very frequently. They usually set up somewhere and then kind of stay there as the business comes to them. What are we doing to try and target these areas to see our local employers or local businesses grow in these areas? So, professional services, finance, insurance, real estate, what are we doing to help them grow and become bigger, and maybe even manufacturing as well?
I can comment on that. Some of the things that we're, there's a number of different things that we're doing. One is that the businesses that we have here, in some of our communities, we're going out and doing business retention and expansion visits. So, we're trying to understand what their needs are, what their growth expectations are. If they're not expected to grow, why not? What do they need to be, I guess, more viable in the county? So, having that understanding of what the business needs are, and how we can better connect them, maybe within the county, is one of those areas that we're, we're working on. Some of the other things that we're doing is some dedicated outreach. We're trying to market the county better, because there seems to be a perception among brokers and agents that Scott County is the destination for, basically, transportation, or just the big box, you know, warehousing. And that's not necessarily what fits with our current residents. So, how do we overcome that perception with the brokers, and have them, when they're working with their clients, do a better job of recommending that they consider Scott County potentially to tap into the workforce that we have here?
Then, Philip, are we doing any tracking of, as we're making these outreaches, are targeting these particular areas for growth, and looking at how successful our programs are in actually adding jobs or bringing in those specific areas?
So, at the First Stop Shop, which is part of the Scott County CDA, we have a database where we track wins, and we're tracking them for all of the cities. At the end of each year, even the wins that we're not involved with, we still try and track through our database, so that we can refer back to it and see where, where we're growing, where we're not, where we might want to do a little more targeting. So, we do have information on that. It's not complete by any means, but we try and do the best that we can with the information that we have.
Another county program that we have to probably close the gap in the manufacturing part of that graphic is our Economic Gardening Program, where we are trying to grow some of our smaller businesses that have made it past the growth stage, they're poised for more growth. We want to provide them the information, the research, so they can make further investments in their business, and usually, that includes hiring more people. And so, for five or six years, we've supported maybe 14 to 16, maybe now more, maybe up to about 20 different businesses that have kind of made that second-stage growth, and helped them provide the resources. We asked them later, how many more people did you add to the payroll? We know that it's been an increase for most of those companies. And most of them have been in that manufacturing. We've had a couple of professional service businesses as well in that. And so, that's just kind of one more example where I think we're trying to grow the businesses that are already here. It's not all about attracting new businesses, but it's growing what we already have.
On page 37, the tax abatements. I guess, I'm wondering, what does this graph tell you, and then, is there other data that the county tracks that shows the outcomes from tax abatements, so whether they're good for us or not?
I'll speak to this one. We, we do a multitude of tracking, you know, through the, through the act that they have to report on, they only have to do it for three years until they hit compliance. But with our contracts that we have, now, remember, economic development abatements are optional for the county. The county board has to decide whether they're going to partner with the school in the city, or just the city, or whether they're going to decline to partner at all, very unlike tax increment financing, which we don't really have an option of. But these are three of the companies that they have made that decision that they were going to contract with the city and partner with them on providing some economic assistance to make these companies, or allow these companies to come into Scott County. Now, what this graph shows on page 37 is, what was our anticipated value increase, our tax-based increase, that the county was expecting? We do know that the taxes that are collected off of this increase in value, for a period of time, get refunded after they're paid back to the city, who then refunds the company for their investment in Scott County. Most of those are between a six- to a nine-year abatement period, and after that, that added tax stays within each of the local governments that it would be settled to otherwise. The other types of things that we do collect on, on abatements is the number of jobs. So, what, we ask the companies every year to provide job growth that they've had, and not only just the job growth, but we want to know, what's the level of wage that you're also paying? And so, between 2017 and 2018, we had 569 jobs that were created in 217, 799 jobs in 2018. And that in and of itself is a, is a very large number, but we're, we're looking for livable wage jobs primarily. The jobs that are paying $14, $15, $16 an hour may be decent jobs for people who are wanting to bring in supplemental income, but they can't afford to live on that. So, in order to come and just make that type of wage, what other types of county incentives are we going to need to provide? Are we going to need to provide some economic assistance in order for them to still live here? So, what we're looking at is, over the $30, $30 range in 2017, there was 356 jobs created, and now, in 2018, there's 440. So, that number is going up, the trend is up, which is great. We know that this is a point in time, they report to us every May, and one of our staff gathers this information and just continues to track it for the county for two purposes. One, so that we can make sure that our citizenship and our county board knows that the investments that they have decided to go forward with are, are, the outcomes are being gained. But the last thing is that we want to make sure that the, the businesses are in compliance with their contract, because if they fail, if they fall out of compliance, then that's a conversation between the board and the city, in cooperation with possibly even the schools, to have a conversation about whether or not we continue to go forward with this contract, or whether or not we should try to get out of it.
Now, continuing down the, the jobs path here, moving over to page 18, looking at the overall job growth, Scott County has seen significant growth in jobs. And knowing that we have the tax abatements, we also have the Economic Gardening, do we have a breakdown of how much is from new business, and how much is from the growth in existing businesses in Scott County?
So, with the projects that we've tracked in our system, we have, we could pull that information to some extent. We don't necessarily have the amount of investment in all of the jobs numbers for every project that's come to Scott County, but we do have it for a fair number of them. So, we can do some estimates on what's new versus what was here and growing. And I feel like, through the assessor's office, they might be able to help with some of the data that they have, where we could potentially see that as well. But we don't have that on hand, at least right this second.
And with the assessor's office, as you know, any time that a new business comes in and they want to either expand, or whether or not they just want to actually move here for the very first time, they have to take out a permit. So, we would know new businesses that moved in, whether they're commercial, even the type, right? Are they industrial-type of businesses, are they commercial-type of businesses? Are they just frontline retail? We can get those numbers, but we would never have the employment numbers that go with it. But working in tandem, maybe with Upper Stop Shop, we could try to put that data together for future.
Just as kind of a, a point of clarification on the job growth piece, are there one or two things, you folks have access to really a lot of data, and it sounds like multiple databases and cross-system databases, are there one or two things that are most important to you to pay attention to? Like, what are the one or two markers that you are looking at?
That's a, that's a good question. I think, ultimately, I think we, well, there's a couple of things, right? Like, we want to make sure that we're paying attention to the 50 by 30 piece, because that, that's been an important part of what we're seeing support, and a lot of the direction and kind of infrastructure around what we're doing to move forward. But at the same time, I think, there's a desire just to make sure that we're kind of fulfilling the mission of, of the county, or live, learn, earn, and really, how well are people doing when it's all said and done? And so, I think, looking at that average wage amount, looking at the data that's on, maybe, page 25, and looking at the industries that we have here, how many jobs are attached to those industries, and what are the average wage for those industries, along with potentially other community indicators, such as what's the average class around, like, if you live here and you work here, how's that feel? And are you able to do that well? And I think those are some other pieces that I think we take into consideration.
Okay. Thank you.
Speaking about wages a little bit, on, I believe it's page 27, and then also, 28 to a little bit, but if you look at, you know, 2015, 2016, 2017, we're significantly above in our average wage for this program than our target. Do you have any information on what's driving us to be so much higher? I mean, I think it was like 46% higher than what the wage target is?
I can speak to just kind of like the, the program itself and, and the focus of the program, which I think definitely contributes to that. That is kind of in part due to the folks that we're serving within the program. As an executive worker, those are individuals that have been laid off due to no fault of their own. And we certainly serve a wide array of individuals, from entry-level workers up to executive-level workers. They tend to be, though, more mid-level to higher, higher-paid jobs that we are, you know, seeing come through the door, and we are, one of our goals that isn't reflected here is to try to match, to some level, the wage that they left. So, we are trying to place them at a similar level wage, of course, for, you know, a variety of reasons. But there's also a real heavy focus on training and retraining in this program. So, the program is funded to be able to retrain folks, and sometimes, you know, we're serving individuals that have been in their same jobs in their career for 20, 30, you know, upwards of 30 years, and are looking for a career change. Or maybe they just need some professional development certifications to take them to the next level. And the program is funded to be able to support the folks in that way. And so, we have really seen great success to, to some of that.
And then, the other, the target that's set, is that a, how is that target set?
It is set, it, they look at the economic condition, conditions across the state, and it's also, they try to match the, the federal target that's set based on the region. And so, when we're looking at, you know, conditions in, in different parts of Minnesota that, you know, wouldn't, that, that might not result in a, in a wage that you could get in the metro area, they're kind of taking that average.
So, this is localized, then, to a certain extent?
It, it's localized to Minne, so it's the same target for the state of Minnesota. So, I mean, everybody across the state has the same target. So, we're looking at conditions from all across the state and, and taking that average. Carrie, do you have data, as you were talking about trying to match salaries that, for people who have lost jobs, do we have data about how well, like, how often does that happen or not happen? We do. I don't have it available today, but we do, that is noted within the program and... Okay. Thanks.
And then, on page 29, kind of following up from those previous questions, we have the self, three-year self-support index. And looking at the, why does it matter? It says, we're looking at if they have a, I'm working an average of 30 hours per week, or off-cash assistance three years after the baseline data was collected. Does this tie to the same program and data that we have for these higher-wage jobs that we're seeing people get?
Sure. It, it actually doesn't. So, this, the self-support index is reflective of our public assistance program, so the Minnesota Family Investment Program. So, that is, those are families that are receiving public assistance, they have one or more dependent children, in the Cash Food Childcare Assistance Program. So, when they exit the program, that is when their baseline starts, and they, this measures whether or not they've stayed off and/or are working that number of hours three years after they've left.
All right. Do you have any information as why we're so suc, these last three measures I was just reading through this was, these are great stories to tell. Is there any information on why we're always above that either upper, that upper limit, even?
Yeah. You know, I mean, I think a lot of this really speaks to the work that the staff does, and our, we are unique here, in that our employment and training staff and our income maintenance staff work really, really closely to make sure that the folks have the benefits they need timely, they're getting all of the services that they're eligible for, which in larger counties isn't, it isn't even possible. So, we're really lucky here to be able to have that collaboration. I think, you know, helping somebody exit the program with as many tools and as much support as they need plays a big role in that. But it's also complicated, because we don't necessarily get the data. When we, when we get our self-support index numbers, we don't necessarily know who exactly is included in that. And so, we, you know, we can look more generally across the folks that we've served and run some other reports, but if we wanted to look at individual, you know, a year in total or by quarter, we just don't, we don't receive that data. So, I wish we did, because I think we would be able to follow, follow some things a little more closely. Thank you.
On page 33, around transit, I'm just curious, how do we maximize this, so the, like, the passengers per hour, how do we work to improve that? And then also, what does the subsidy per passenger tell you?
Well, at the regional level, they do look at routes and, and how they're performing, and oftentimes... And oftentimes, uh, the factors that go into that subsidy, um, to that part of the question are, you know, how many passengers are actually picking up and serving along that corridor? A lot of that has to do with employment density or housing density where that route runs. And this looks at our two routes that I would call local circulator routes in Scott County. Um, they're the four ninety-seven and the four ninety-nine, they're run by MVTA. Prior to the merger, they were run by Scott County Transit. Um, and so, the west route serves the Shockey Mall in the downtown area from Marshall Road. It's kind of, Marshall Road's the hub. And then, um, the other route, four ninety-nine, goes to the east and serves Amazon, South Bridge, Dean, um, Dean Lakes and that area. So, those routes really, um, a function of how fast people can travel on those routes. They make decisions about whether to ride them or not, whether it goes to locations that they need to go to or it's within walking distance to where they need to go to, or if they can connect to another route. Uh, the four ninety-five brings a lot of folks in from other points outside of the county. And these routes then are kind of the feeder from that, um, um, point at Marshall Road where they drop folks off. So, all of those things kind of play into how well the route performs. Uh, subsidy really gets at, and most of the local suburban routes, um, perform, uh, I think the average of the, at the regional level was fourteen dollars and eighty-two cents per passenger. So, that's the actual subsidy for that passenger on average. They perform at a much lower, well, a much higher rate of subsidy than, um, uh, inner-city bus routes or, uh, even light rail. But that's a function of how many people they serve and, and the, and if you really look at the characteristics of the areas that they serve. So, this is a peer comparison, so they'll be comparing those local suburban routes throughout the metro area in other parts of the metro, not just Scott County.
So, what kinds of things do you look at? You, you talked about the different things that influence it, what do you look at to try and improve that then?
Well, uh, MVTA just, uh, retooled these routes, um, when the merger happened. And, uh, some of the things that they did was, we used to go into, um, the shopping centers. And now what they tried to do is they have set up bus stops adjacent to the shopping centers uh, so that they could keep the bus routes, um, moving more rapidly. Uh, so that was one thing that they looked at to try to improve performance. I think it's had mixed results. Uh, the routes that were predominantly shopping center oriented, uh, our ridership went down. And the routes that were more employment-oriented, they actually, the ridership went up. Uh, so, uh, it, it kind of depends on the characteristic of the route. The other thing that, that goes on is that you could adjust the route corridor if there's, um, a development that's adjacent to it that goes in, that has some density that needs to be served, like senior housing or, or an employment center. Uh, but oftentimes, those routes don't get adjusted greatly. The other thing we can do to improve route performance is improve, uh, people's ability to get to the route. If, uh, you look at our suburban routes, uh, and you walk, uh, what is considered to be a normal walking distance from that route, which is like a quarter to a half mile, you'll often find that a lot of the city streets and even some of our county roads are lacking pedestrian facilities and they're not maintained during the wintertime, so that's a deterrent for ridership. So, all of those things together, uh, need to be looked at and, and, uh, considered and improved to optimize ridership on these routes.
Does the county have a say in that or do, on, on the choices MVTA makes?
Um, we do. Uh, we, uh, participate in the technical committee, so do the cities. Um, Commissioner Ulrich is on the, um, on the board, so we do have a say in how those, uh, changes are made. Um, and, uh, I think we have a lot of influence, uh, in terms of how, I mean, the cities have in particularly a lot of influence on how things change by how they continue to evolve in their development.
On these routes, have we seen, uh, ridership going up as people are more familiar with the routes over the last? I know we only have to twenty seventeen, but looking at monthly numbers or something, are we seeing improvements in there?
In particular, the four ninety-nine route has improved, the four ninety-seven route, uh, not so much. Uh, so there has been some improvements over time. Ridership overall, both in Scott County and in the region, on these kinds of routes has actually dropped uh, because of lower gas prices and people making choices. Uh, so, it's a little hard to, to, um, be precise yet. We probably have a, have to have a longer data series to be able to figure that out.
Um, and then you talk about lower-performing routes are to be evaluated for restructuring or possible elimination. What's our timeframe for this route to perform better before we have another change or possible elimination?
Well, I think it's, the, the review of these routes occur monthly, um, and annually. At the region, they occur annually. Um, the, these routes are funded through regional funds. And so, uh, there becomes, if routes continue to perform, perform poorly, uh, there's choices that MVTA will be, make within their, their, um, routes that they have about whether to, to subsidize this route or to change this route out or eliminate this route. In fact, they just went through some changes that predominantly affected, um, our express routes in the county to downtown Minneapolis, um, where they did adjust the services. So, that occurs usually on an annual basis. And, and I'm sure the conversation at the region, if routes continue to perform poorly, um, will impact how MVTA gets their funding through the Met Council.
Lisa, can I ask a, a question from the next page, from page thirty-four? I'm just wondering, as we, as we talk about transportation being part of the infrastructure for economic development and job growth and like how people move around the county to get to and from work, like, what do you see as the capacity, like, in the current system? Like, what's the capacity to move people, to move goods? You know, I'm thinking about like the ten-ton carrier capacity. Like, how, how well are we positioned for transportation to support economic growth?
Um, I think the county has made, um, over the past two to three decades, some really great strides in getting, um, the infrastructure in place, uh, to support economic development. It's the one area that we really do have, um, uh, an ability to make a direct investment in something that can support economic development. Um, over the time that I've been here and even prior to that, we've, we've worked hard at developing the grid system to support, um, the communities in the north that are urbanizing at a rapid pace um, and, and build four-lane, two-to-four-lane road conversions to support that growth. Uh, we have, um, in previous, uh, um, Scott delivers presentations, we've showed you the ten-ton roadmap and the change over time. And we've made significant strides county-wide on improving the ten-ton, um, road system through the board's investment. Uh, not only in expansion projects and reconstruction projects, but also through our ongoing preservation program where we look at roads and, and evaluate them and design our overlay program such that we improve those roads to ten-ton capacity. And I believe now, um, on our county road system, for the most part, we're probably at, um, ninety percent of our roads being ten, ten-ton capacity. And that's, uh, um, good because it supports, um, the movement of freight county-wide. It supports our farm community, it supports our, uh, manufacturing that are in some of our smaller communities. Uh, and as well, um, the northern developing, um, and urbanizing, uh, communities. So, I think they've really made a good effort. And this map here really pretty much shows that if you look at the investments that we have planned, um, in transportation, that by twenty forty, uh, if we pursue all of them, the county road system's in pretty good shape. The road system that, uh, tends to have some capacity issues to support development uh, appears to be the, the state's trunk highway system. Um, Highway thirteen, the river crossings, all show congestion.
Have we looked at, um, not just road improvements, but transit, public transit options on some of these areas that we see being congested to try and, um, move some of that traffic a different way than just road expansions and redesign?
Well, in particular, we, we had a major effort, uh, along the one sixty-nine corridor study to look at, um, mobility on that corridor and ways that we could enhance that. Uh, it was a study joint, done jointly with Met Council and MINDOT. And we looked at, um, several-pronged attack to that, including, um, bus advantages, improving bus advantages on the one sixty-nine corridor in Scott County and all the way to downtown Minneapolis through, um, a transitway, uh, as well as MIMPAS. So, we have been looking at those corridors. Trunk Highway thirteen's another example where we've looked at, um, how to improve transit. And as a part of the thirteen and one-on-one project, we actually, um, had the foresight that there might be a transit line like the four ninety-five going in there. And we put in, uh, transit advantage shoulders on that corridor through that improvement. So, we continue to monitor and try to stay ahead of those things.
One of the things we learned a few years ago when we invited a lot of real estate brokers and agents down to look at our top ten corridors or intersections for economic development is that congestion really matters when it comes to site selection. Businesses do, do not want to locate on corridors that are congested today or projected to be for, uh, congested. Uh, their employers don't want to deal with that. They're trying to move, uh, goods up and down those corridors, they don't want those delays. So, we would often talk about what's the traffic today in these areas. But for those site selectors, they were more curious about what's the future traffic volumes on these roads? Because that really matters to where they're going to locate a future business.
And even, um, they, they are even concerned, uh, not only with our roads, but also freeways, access to freeways and getting to the interstate system. And that, those, um, those, uh, sources or considerations are very important for, for these large businesses that are coming into Scott County.
Chris, I want to ask a quick question on that, just because thirteen through Prior Lake and all the issues we have there with the environment. And I think Bell Plan is facing some development on the west. What does County Road Eight's extension do to help our transportation system?
Um, we did a little bit of testing this year with the comprehensive plan and the modeling effort that we went, uh, through. And if we make that connection, uh, it has a significant impact on, uh, reducing congestion on one sixty-nine and on thirteen because it now provides an option for people to get to thirty-five W uh, without having to, um, go up Highway thirteen or, um, one sixty-nine and across the Bloomington Ferry Bridge. So, it provides a pretty important connection. And it's one of those areas where I think we ought to be focusing and thinking about how do we win and how do we make that happen, uh, in the next, um, uh, planning period.
And Bell Plan is facing some development there because of the interchange. Are, do they understand the importance of the flow and making sure that corridor moves as well?
I believe that, um, the, the city, the city staff understand the function of that roadway. I can't speak to the elected officials, but, um, I think that, um, my conversations with the city staff is that they do understand and, and see the importance of preserving that corridor and are trying to work, um, collaboratively. But it's always difficult because those, um, mining proposals and other development proposals come in in those communities very incrementally. And so, it's difficult to make transformative change. And so, they really have to be thinking about each individual decision that they're making with those development proposals.
Carrie, can we talk about the digital divide? So, I'm looking at page thirty-six. So, it says that Scott County has the, the smallest digital divide in the state, is that, am I reading that right?
Correct.
And, um, can you talk about, like, knowing that there's still some areas in Scott County that don't have access? Can you talk about that rating and just kind of what goes into that?
Sure. So, uh, this, um, this slide, uh, is a, first I want to call it that there was a type of sources, actually, a twenty-seventeen study. Purdue has been tracking this, um, for a number of years and they're going to continue having this be an annual study across the country. It studies, um, basically the available infrastructure, uh, broadband availability in an area and its social economic factors. Um, so, the, the people's ability to, um, consume that technology. If the technology's available, but the, um, the, the population is such that they're not ready to consume it, then the divide would be bigger. So, we have, have a unique, um, uh, cross-road in Scott County where our, our available broadband and our, our population's ability to consume it is, is in that sweet spot. So, we have a very low divide. Um, we still have in, uh, uh, so, one thing that, um, I've had discussions with rural townships about is they are, uh, which might be, uh, is a later on slide, is they are hurting on available broadband. Even though we have a very fiber-rich environment, uh, we're not getting the carriers to necessarily go out to the, to the rural areas. But our population, um, centers are, you know, on the north part where we're pretty well-served. So, that is swaying the numbers to be, um, you know, where the divide overall for the county is low. And we're, we are the lowest in the state, we're one of the lowest in the country, actually.
Speaking to, to what you're saying there, on slide thirty-five, it shows the percent of households served by wireline, wire line broadband. What can the county do to help more of the rural areas that are at more of the fifty percent availability?
Um, so, that has been a, a, a new initiative that we've been, uh, tracking along with the administration and the board is, uh, we're trying to create an environment from Scott County's perspective for the municipalities to, um, uh, be able to have a conversation directly with the providers. Uh, and, uh, kind of like Rhodes is, we want to leverage our Scott County fiber assets to encourage, uh, broadband development, um, which is good for education, it's excellent for, you know, development, uh, it's, uh, excellent for, um, just our quality of life. It's been shown to, um, statistically really help businesses, small and medium-large businesses. It's been credited for helping, um, uh, bring, uh, like Shutterfly and Emerson, um, and Amazon, uh, to the area as a, as a factor that helped. Um, so, we're trying to create an environment and we, and we, our main way of doing that is through partnerships. Um, so, we created a partnership with Access Networks and Access Networks helps facilitate, um, a concept called open access. And that is, again, leveraging our fiber, uh, asset investment for middle mile so that a provider could call and come and do business in Scott County. And rather, uh, they would work with carrier to carrier. So, they would work with Access Networks, who is a provider, to help facilitate that over our middle mile fiber, if that makes sense. We're also creating, um, we're creating conversations directly with those townships and encouraging, uh, providers to go and meet with the townships and have grassroots, um, uh, grassroots conversations. And that is, that has started working in Spring, uh, Spring Lake Township and San Creek Township and Blakely. We've started getting houses that haven't had broadband for years, they're starting to get, uh, um, broadband to the tune of twenty-five megabits download and three megabits upload when they were only at like, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty-six and five-twelve upload and download.
I think one other thing that occurs too is, is that we formed a pretty good partnership with Perry's Group. And when we do highway projects, uh, we try to do what we can, uh, to facilitate the addition of fiber where, where it makes sense and work with, uh, um, the, the, um, the groups that might be interested. A case in point is, we're continuing to try to serve underserved, uh, businesses along the one sixty-nine corridor and facilitate, as we're constructing those projects, the ability for these providers to come in and work in the right way to get that, um, fiber to those businesses.
Nice. Thanks, Lisa. Okay, other questions?
So, one I had, we talked a couple of times about the, um, commercial and industrial demand and how we've tried to incorporate in that, in our comprehensive plan update. and how we've tried to incorporate in that, in our comprehensive plan update. But a lot of it's really dependent on the cities and as they annex in. How are we working with the cities to try and facilitate that and having that commercial industrial zone land available?
Yeah, a couple of ways. I can start, probably Stacy has some thoughts, but a lot of our cities are starting to look at their future growth areas and recognizing that they're going to need to expand the city limits in order to bring in new areas for both residential growth but also commercial and industrial. So, at the county, we work with the townships and the cities to look at orderly annexation agreements, maybe establishing them for the first time like we've seen down in Jordan, St. Lawrence Township, or update their agreements like we've seen with Jackson and Shakopee. So that everyone kind of knows the staging and which parcels are likely going to be annexed first, and when is the city going to extend sewer water roads into those areas.
Sorry, that's slide 39.
Sure. And so, we try to put as much order to it as we can. It's still market-driven, so that's ultimately what really starts the process. But we try to set the stage so that everyone knows generally when things are going to occur. The cities have been updating their long-range plans to show which areas are good for commercial industrial use or office use. The city of Shakopee has a whole new vision for the area around the 169 and 41 interchange, and so they will want to see that type of development over time located in that area. So, that's one example, but I'm sure Stacy has some examples of the CDA type thing.
Well, so, one of the things that the CDA does is every five years, they'll do a housing study update and then also a commercial industrial update. And that information is shared with all of the cities. There are certain recommendations for each of the cities to consider. Anything new, like in the city of Shakopee, would be incorporated into the next update. So, the last one was done in 2017. The beginning of 2017 is when it came out for the commercial industrial. So, I would expect that we would look at doing that again in 2021 or so. And we do, we, through our EDI grants, our economic development incentive grants that the CDA offers, we try and give priority to projects that look at how do we do things that opens up more commercial industrial land and moves it closer to being shovel-ready. So, we work closely with the county and the city to try and identify what those areas are, what those projects are, and where it makes the most sense to kind of focus at the time.
For some of these areas that we've identified, what is the condition of the utilities and the infrastructure in there, not just roads, but the other utilities that we'd need? And are the cities talking about making sure that those are at a level where it would encourage commercial industrial, that require a different type and capacity for those utilities?
Well, we've inventoried all of the parcels that are guided or zoned for commercial and industrial development and made a determination if they're pad-ready. And we had some criteria to establish if they're pad-ready, meaning that all the utilities are there, the road is there. Really, the need is just to put up a building and they're ready to go. So, that was the kind of our class-one pad-ready site. So, we inventoried all of the parcels around the county that fit that description. Then we went to a class-two where there's a little more extension of a road or sewer to get to that parcel. And finally, class-three was really maybe 10, 15 years out. So, that was a useful exercise for all of us because we quickly realized that we had very few pad-ready sites in the county about two, three years ago. And that's really what prompted the cities to work with the CDA to think about how do we get more pad-ready sites onto the market. We had a brokers' day at Canterbury Park a few years ago, and we distributed maps of all of our cities and townships and where the pad-ready sites are located. And tried to promote that if you want to come down, we're ready to do business, but unfortunately, we don't have a lot of large sites left. I think at the time, we had maybe one or two parcels that were pad-ready over 40 acres. So, again, we need to really focus on that as the cities, figuring out where we can open up more areas, get the utilities there, and get more pad-ready sites.
I think one of the things that we do, especially with transportation projects, is partner with the cities. Like, for example, when we did the reconstruction of 12, we made an important, we facilitated an important sewer connection that opened up a fairly substantial area for the city of Prior Lake. We also spent quite a bit of time working with the city of Shakopee as they started developing the west end. And that has some challenges from a sewer infrastructure and from a water infrastructure standpoint, and we've been trying to work with them in terms of how we require improvements to understand and kind of be sensitive to the obstacles that developers will have extending those utilities. So, it's a really collaborative approach when it comes to that, and I think the paradigm has really changed for development over the last two decades with the change in the marketplace and financing. And so, they have other obstacles that we need to be considerate of.
One thing I'll add on that is just to underscore again what Lisa had said earlier, that in certain areas, when there's a road construction or like 169 and 41, early on, we started talking about getting fiber dominance in that area as a utility, you know, so telecommunications, getting the providers to extend fiber further to the south from that intersection along that road line. So, that businesses, when they, if they locate there, there will be broadband available.
One last thing to add is that in some cases, like the city of Savage, we're starting to look at redevelopment opportunities. And what do those businesses along Highway 13 potentially need where we could theoretically move them to a different location that's better suited for outdoor storage or whatever it might be, and redevelop those areas for a better use essentially for where it's at? So, that's another thing that we're looking at coordinating with the cities and the county as well.
I think one thing that's different in Minnesota or particularly the metro area compared to other places that I've been is that the Met Council plays a big role in utility extension in the area of sewers. And I think one of the things that we learned in the past decade is that how you develop your orderly annexation plans depends on how they plan for expansions. And so, I think Brad and I and others here at the county, we're kind of in a leadership role in figuring that out and helping the city understand that it was important about how you set up staging in your orderly annexation plans, even though they were reluctant to do that. It was important for the regional facilities to get planned accordingly. So, I think that's an area where we have collaborated and helped facilitate, but not necessarily had to provide those services.
I wonder if we could move to the audience for a few minutes? Are there questions from the audience? She just knows you're going to ask them.
Well, and this was kind of touched on before, and I know housing's next month, but what strikes me so much about, and really good information here, folks, I found very interesting, but it feels like we kind of have a perfect storm or such a kind of critical touch point when you look at, so, we have about 40% of our, 6% of our jobs, you can't afford an apartment here. We have already 47% of our residents that are renting are burdened by that, and we have a 1% vacancy rate. And it just feels like it's just such a critical kind of piece for the county, and I'm just trying to get a better handle on what's the county's role? There's some reference to the cities, and I kind of get that, but is there something as a county we can do to tackle this issue?
Yeah, I think that's a good question. I think you add on top of that, even just some of the data that Lisa brought forward on the transportation part, the low usage on public transportation, and, you know, will potentially there be something that's done? Boy, if there's not housing here, if you take that away, that's a real problem then. So, I think one, our big issue is just kind of creating awareness to the fact that this is out there, and how can we work and come alongside the cities to show that this is individuals that might be impacted by this that are working full-time, that are pulling in a decent wage, but not a wage that's made them potentially able to purchase something within the county. So, what are we going to do about that? How do we strategize around that? Because I think, like I mentioned, we've got some local employers that are pretty concerned about how are they going to get people here, and they can't even say that, oh, there's, you know, enough housing that's coming in the meantime because it's a year or two years off. And so, that's kind of the, a little bit of the alarm that we're hearing from some people. So, I do think it's something we need to kind of rally around and try to figure out what we're going to do next.
And I would just reiterate, I think the education piece is huge. Residents don't understand necessarily what high-density housing means. They all have perceptions that it's only low income and people aren't working, and they're all on, you know, assistance, which just is not the case. And I think through the Live, Learn, Earn Initiative, the Housing Work Group has been working very hard on how do we raise the awareness around what the needs are, what it actually is, and how it fits into our community. So, I think to continue doing that is definitely important in moving along to get what we need in the county.
I think one of the things that we need to think about, and I'm not sure exactly what the county's role is versus other entities, is, you know, we probably can't just keep expanding transit service to sites, and so, we need to somehow make sure that where we're infilling with housing, that it's in the right location if they, if it's the type of housing that needs to have transit service to it. And there are tools out there that we don't currently have at the county, and I know that we'll probably talk about that more at the Housing Scott Delivers next month, but where potentially you could come in and write down the cost of land because those areas where transit lines are probably are more expensive land in the county right now. And if you're trying to put affordable or workforce-type housing in there, then the quality of the housing unit goes down because the price of land is so high, or it's just not feasible to even purchase that land for that purpose. So, I think we need to find a way to bring the parties together to balance those components better.
One last thing for food for thought, as Michael, our county assessor, just sent me an email just within the last day or two talking about a really big housing development, multi-unit housing development that's coming in. And even if we could provide maybe some level of affordability for our senior population to move into something where they still, they don't have to maintain their existing complement, their house, their yard, and some of the other factors that go with it. And if those affordable options exist for either even our senior population, that would maybe even open up some of those, the availability of homes that may be affordable at some level. Or, as they become available, is there a way for us to partner with the First Stop Shop and the CDA to help provide some incentive package to keep them affordable for our younger population? So, it's, whether it is or is not, something that we can succeed at, at least it should be in the back of our minds as these other senior centers are being built.
Madam Chair, can I turn it back to you for questions from the board, please?
Yes, thank you. Wonderful presentations. Colleagues, questions for the group? Yes, Ms. Hall.
Yes, I noticed the Live, Learn, Earn website for employers and potential employees to connect, you know, and so forth. It's one thing to design a website, it's another thing to manage the data as goes in there. You know, you design a website and you get all the stuff in there, and then you find probably that it takes half-time, three-quarter time, whatever time a person to do that. I'm just wondering, I support Live, Learn, Earn engagement in that, but I just wonder if there's a way it could be housed with First Stop Shop at some point in the future? If that would make sense, I don't know. I just, I don't, I don't see Live, Learn, Earn having an ongoing staff person, so that's one question. The other, I kind of do struggle with, a couple of things related to low-cost employers or low-wage-paying employers. That's a pretty moral way to say it. How much obligation does the government have to make their business model work? Like, let's say X company, they pay $13, $14 an hour, and they have thousands of employees. I think we need to push back on them and say, if we're considered building workforce housing on your campus. I just, you know, the fact that we would make all these things available to them to make their business model work, the government doing that, I don't know, I question that. The other thing, and I got one more. When we consider subsidizing or helping with some kind of aid to business coming in, I think a lot of times we've talked about how many employees at what wage, and we're so focused on the hourly wage. I would hope that we were more focused on the yearly income because it doesn't do any good to say you're paying $25 an hour and they can only get 20 hours, you know, or whatever it is. I know in our area, we had a restaurant open, a very popular restaurant, and I'm hurt and thankful to hear this, that they have like 93 new employees with the average wage being over $26 an hour for this restaurant. Well, then I wonder, can they get full-time? It's a question, you know. But anyhow, so, I threw out three things there to consider.
I'll take the website one.
I was going to say, so, how about I take off the website one, and then you can follow up. So, specific to the existing Live, Learn, Earn website that's out there, that was set up really at the beginning as a data warehousing site for the people who are involved in the Live, Learn, Earn groups. So, it's not necessarily meant to be an outward-facing, to-the-public, here's what we're doing type site. It was more for managing documents for different meetings as we were going through those different working groups and coming up with what actions we wanted to focus on moving forward. But with that, we've now transitioned within one of our, well, a couple of our working groups to looking at creating a website.
Right, and I think right now, we're at the exploration phase. We know that there's a few communities that have done something similar, so we're looking at how can we set this up so that the sustainability of this is something that hopefully isn't government-paid for, that maybe our community is pitching in because there's such a desperate need for our local workforce to make that connection. But I think you're right, like, as far as how to house this, maintain this, and keep this up, we want to make sure that A, it's successful and it does what we intended to do, and that B, it doesn't become some sort of a drain on any of our existing resources that have only helped to support what's happening within the community. So, still at the exploration phase of what we need to do with that, but I think there's a lot of smart people in that community, so we're hopeful we'll come up with a solution for that. As far as being able to push back on employers, or I think, you know, I think competition right now just within the labor force is, we're seeing an escalation in wages just due to some of that. And so, I think always engaging in a conversation with employers about available options that are out there. But I, just from my seat, or I think wouldn't want to make a recommendation of what they should do, but we can always, we have had some employers that have contacted us on what our, their competitors pay as a way to try to increase wages and be more competitive. But I think a good point. I don't know, as far as the incentives?
So, as far as the incentive packages go, when we're looking at the data that they're providing, and we've had some controversy over the topic of dollar per hour or annual wage level and whether or not we should include part-time employees in their package as they're submitting it for consideration, currently, we only look at full-time employees. However, our prior board was very interested in the supplemental wages for part-time employees and making sure that there was a large quantity of those available for those who don't want to work full-time or who do not have to have the income as a livable wage to support, but it's more of a supplemental. So, with each board, there's a little bit different take on what should we be looking at, and when does public subsidy come into play and when should it not? But currently, in our contracts and the reporting that we have to do, again, we're anticipating that this data is accurate when we receive it, but it's only full-time employees with benefits is what we're looking at. So, that, and that is structured within all of our contracts as well.
Related to employers assisting with housing, and Brad can maybe help me out here a little bit too, but through the Resilient Communities Project that the county is working on with the University of Minnesota, there is a project that's looking at employer-assisted housing. And what do those programs look like around the county? How might we might, how might we be able to implement something like that here in Scott County? What types of employers make sense to reach out to to try and make that happen? What types of employers make sense to reach out to to try and make that happen? We're having conversations with SMSC to talk about, you know, how we might be able to partner on some different ideas. So we are trying to look out of the box and see if there are ways that we can get employers more involved in housing conversations, particularly those that have those more entry-level-type wages.
Commissioner Beard?
Well, Madam Chair, this is a huge subject with all kinds of hot buttons in it to talk about, and it would have been more fun to be engaged in an ongoing debate from the get-go instead of trying to collect thoughts and hold them to the very end. So rather than drop the plow way back at nine fifteen and start from there, let me just make a couple of high-level observations. One, as I listened to the things that we talked about where my principles are in accord with what we're doing, and that's the government sets the stage. We build the interest structure so people can create wealth. That's one thing I will quibble with in the whole presentation way back in the beginning. There was a slide that said something about our objective is to help create wealth. We don't create wealth. We build roads and we lay fiber, and we do things to let people create wealth. The creativity and the growth and the productivity and prosperity of this county is embedded in the hearts and minds of the citizens of this county and the people who come here and invest their capital to do stuff. Make things, shingles, glass, bottles, print, whatever. They do stuff, and that's where the wealth comes from. We set the stage so they can do that. So I listened with fascination at the discussion about transportation, and I'll point out just slightly chiding you that no one mentioned the railroad system in this county. Very basic, very fundamental to an enormous amount of wealth and an enormous amount of high-paying jobs that exist in this county. They're here because the Union Pacific Railroad is connected to both coasts and to the international markets. Just an observation. As we talk land use planning, you'll want to protect that because we can't continue to build schools, apartment buildings, and strip malls next to the railroad right-of-way and expect that asset to be there for our grandkids. We have to remember to protect that right-of-way and to protect asset or access to the railroad. My second one is the airports. We have no commercial or public-use airports in this county. We rely on the Metropolitan Airport Commission for Air Lake Airport on the east and Flying Cloud Airport just across the river. That may not be on anybody's radar, no pun intended, but to the corporate campuses that locate here, the really high-paying jobs, that's a big deal. Access to Flying Cloud and Air Lake Airport, and maybe to an extent down in the southwest corner of the county, La Sure or Mankato. Just know that those are out there and we don't have any. So we should probably have some sort of a tether to the Metropolitan Airport Commission or to the adjacent counties that actually have it. Some of them that are out of our control have to do with the utilities that I think Perry mentioned. The cost of accessing the Metropolitan Waste Commission is getting to be a real problem. And in that case, we're all in the same swamp together. It's not like Scott County has an advantage over Hennepin. Metropolitan Waste Commission is what it is, and it just costs a lot of money to treat sewage. But we may want to pay attention to that as that unfolds in the future. I could go on and on about the cost of housing and low-income housing. Cindy referenced the ability for people to live in their homes when we're older. I heard a statistic somewhere recently in one of these kind of meetings that forty percent of the housing in Shakopee is under two-hundred thousand dollars. Forty percent of the living units in Shakopee are under two-hundred thousand. The problem is people like Karen and Mike Beard live in, and we're not moving anytime soon, so trying to pry those people like me out of those so that our grandkids can afford to buy our place and live here is an issue. I think things like we did with Upon Homes and just down the street here with the HRA, CDA, I mean, that sold out and filled up in a hurry with people like me selling out of our hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar homes so that other kids can buy those, those affordable units that are already here, already sitting in our neighborhoods in Shakopee, and I'm sure it's the same in Savage and Jordan and Billplin, too. And the cost of housing going up is one that I don't think this working group can even begin to approach when it comes to taxes and building codes and things that are happening that just continue to drive up the cost. But it's nice to know we're aware of it, but again, I kind of step back and think, is that really a core function of government? Core function of government to find people places to live? I'd love to debate that more, but not this morning. I guess I'm not asking for any answers, I did some observations as I listened to the discussion.
Thinking of writing it up around your home.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Could I maybe provide one just comment back on that?
Yes, please.
So one of the things that we're hearing, which is kind of interesting and I think is worth maybe finding out some more about, is that we've been talking a lot about senior housing, and typically, senior housing is rental housing. But we've heard from a lot of seniors who say, I don't want to leave my house and move into something where I have to rent it. I want to purchase something that's not totally out of my budget, but it's mine, it's my property to own. And we don't have any of that. So that's definitely an opportunity, I think, for something that we could look at where maybe that would encourage some of our seniors to move out of those homes and into a different place where their homes would become available for less money.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Ulrich is chiding me. My, illustrations for illustration purposes only, nobody's going to buy it. But you know, if you want to get into the story about how we ended up there, we can talk about affordable housing and personal responsibility, but that's another discussion.
Next time, thank you, Commissioner. Comments or questions? Commissioner Beard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we are going to talk about housing next month, right? Okay, good. Yeah, that'll be good, that'll be good. So I have two hot buttons when it comes to this. One's the fiber. I love that, that we have that infrastructure and that, the county bears that burden on the levy, but it impacts in a positive way our taxpayers. Our one, you know, we all are digging in the same well, that we've saved, school districts a ton of dough, technical term, cities a ton of dough, I'm looking at Perry, but I love that. Now bear with me, I'm trying to make a point here. So we have this fiber, we've had it for a while. My question as it comes to economic development, is it still in that window of new, exciting, hot, sexy, or are we moving to its bowl of vanilla ice cream? Good, but everyone has it. Is it still, I'm looking at Stacy and Perry, is, is the iron still hot on fiber as it pertains to maybe attracting Silicon Prairie-type companies, or is it just sort of expected to have it as infrastructure?
Sure, I'll start. Well, I would always choose the hot and sexy over vanilla. And so I do think that fiber actually is becoming even sexier. I think policymakers such as yourself are becoming even more aware of the impact of broadband. Developers are starting to be more astute in driving broadband to the properties that they're building because they're recognizing it's just as important as any other utility like electricity or water. And so I think communities just in general are starting to become more aware, we are, we'll be putting an article in the Scott County Scene this next edition to try to create even more awareness. And so I think from businesses, I get a lot of calls from residents out in the county that are underserved, but I think businesses are starting to really expect in a commercial area, it should be there as a utility. But that's just my take.
And I would say generally speaking, we still hear about a lot of different counties throughout the state who are striving to have something. They don't have something like Scott County has yet. So Scott County was very forward-thinking in coming up with the ring, and I think now the trick is, how do we best utilize it to attract the types of businesses that we want to attract, and how do we actively use it to start reaching out to those technology-type companies and make sure that the integration is seamless and that it's not a big obstacle to overcome just to get them hooked up to it? So I think those are discussions that we're starting to have and some, some things that we're starting to look into as we move forward.
Well, for me, it's just, it's one of those things that, I guess, makes me hyperventilate a little bit, like our opportunity to capture that as a competitive advantage for, for commercial business. It feels like that window is, as time goes on, is closing. I don't know, I hope that's not the case. I hope it releases vanilla with some sprinkles on it or something that is a competitive advantage to attract, you know, I don't know what slide it is here, you know, that, the delta between, hey, we've got all of these trained folks, but the job doesn't match up. So that's just one of the things that kind of keeps me up at night. The second is, and Stacy and I, you know, we've talked about this every time I bug you when I'm at City Hall, it feels like our canvas has kind of been painted as, hey, you're looking for a place to build a big square or rectangular building with very little windows? We've got a place for you, a lot of them. Changing that dynamic of, hey, yeah, we have those and we've got a lot of them, but there's also other opportunities, and that's where I see that fiber as a potential of these high-paying jobs. It doesn't always have to be the big companies. If Mickey were here, she sat at this table before, you know, kind of advocating for small businesses that have really high-paying jobs. I think the mayor, Prior Lake, was around here or is here, and, you know, they're really focused on trying to diversify their tax base with commercial growth. So those things, it just, it feels like that window's closing and we need to repaint the canvas and drive the conversation, and then brokers get it in their mind, and oh, Shakopee, I call it the four Rs, rail, road, rivers, and airports, since we use a written ticker, you know, R back in the old days. I know we're set up for all of those distribution-type places, but that also serves other businesses as well. So how do we best maximize that window while it's still open to change the conversation? I know brokers like really expensive gifts, which is.
We won't go there, but one of the things that we are talking about, you know, the post-secondary presence in the county helps to open up kind of that idea that maybe the county is more open to the innovation-type jobs and entrepreneurialship. And the whole idea of this innovation center is something that I think would help to change the perception of Scott County if we can capitalize on the residents that we have here to take advantage of that service being offered in the county.
All right, thank you all for your comments. I'll submit some email comments because I think we're out of time for this portion of the agenda. I want to thank everybody for this presentation. What really strikes me most is I'm just so happy and proud, it's, I have no reason to be proud, that all of you from all of these different departments and entities are looking at this and working on this together. And so far in my experience in this world of government, we're doing a great job on getting out of those silos, getting out of those departments, and I'm glad because it's everybody's, if this is an initiative, it's everybody's responsibility. And so I thank you for that especially, and thank you for the presentation. We'll now recess for five minutes as we reconfigure the room for the rest of the meeting. We'll start again at ten thirty.
I just noticed, I just noticed that there's timestamps on the agenda.
All right, we will reconvene the January fifteenth, twenty nineteen Scott County Board Meeting. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. These are items that have been previously discussed, workshopped, and are deemed to be non-controversial. I'll read through the consent agenda, and then we'll survey the board to see if any items need to be pulled. First, we have seven point one, approve the renewal application for an intoxicating liquor license for twenty nineteen for Heritage Links Golf Club located in Credit River Township. Seven point two, adopt resolution number twenty nineteen dash zero zero six, entering into an agreement with Ortel Architects LTD for Design Consultant Services for the Cleary Maintenance Shop Replacement Project in Cleary Lake Regional Park. Seven point three, to approve record of disbursements and approved claims. Seven point four, approve payroll processing of personnel actions. These four items constitute the consent agenda. Does any member want to pull an item for further discussion? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion this morning.
Second.
It's been moved in second and to approve the consent agenda as read. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Excellent, now we're on to a fun and exciting part of the agenda. Sheriff Henan will be presenting the Morris A. Miller Outstanding Service Awards.
Hey, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I have the exciting privilege today to present another one of our Morris Miller Health Hero Award nominations. One thing you'll notice as members of the board is we present a lot more of these in the last couple of years, and part it's due to the advancements we've made in some of our rescue and medical technology using our squad cars. We've been using, for instance, AEDs for the last twenty years, many of those donated by our Shakopee, Midwakken Sioux community. But in the last two years, we've added some new technologies and some new pieces to assist us. Nalaxone, which is used for opioid overdoses, is something we use quite frequently now amongst the county. And last year, we received a rescue pump CPR system as well through a donation through the Saints Foundation in Alina. So those all are helping us be better prepared and better able to respond to emergencies in the community, and that is a big priority of our role out in the townships and in our city communities. And then lastly is tourniquets. That's a, it's a technology, too, that has come to public safety in recent years, is a new way to provide some advanced support to people in pretty extreme emergencies when a tourniquet is used. And we've seen them used a few times the last couple of years, and this example today is a good example of where it came to be, and it really changed the difference for Cody here. So Cody, do you want to step up and you can stand next to me here when we present these? This is Cody Pelosi, and I think he may have a few words when we're done here, but I'm just going to read the scenario really quick, and then we'll present these awards. This award is named in honor of the late Morris A. Miller. Mr. Miller was highly respected in the emergency medical services field as he worked diligently for many years in the area of pre-hospital care in Scott County and throughout the metro area. The individuals receiving these awards today were brought forward to the Scott County All Hazards Committee, and the name and circumstances for this award is follows. This Morris A. Miller Health Hero Award nomination is for citizen Bill Turgey, Deputy Jake Lannan, Deputy Ben Kestner, and Sergeant Bob Ryan. And the situation that unfolded was on August first of last year at three forty-five P.M. when the sheriff's office were dispatched to a personal injury accident involving an all-train vehicle in the area of Zen Avenue and East Two-Forty Street in Cedar Lake Township. Upon receiving the information from Scott County Dispatch that the victim's arm was half-gone, Sergeant Ryan immediately requested an air ambulance through North Memorial. And this request enables a quickest response to the scene and subsequent transportation to a trauma center in Minneapolis. Once on scene, Sergeant Ryan observed two people on the roadway next to this overturned vehicle. One of the individuals identified as Cody, the driver, and the victim of the accident, and he saw that he had a severe injury to his left arm, and there were toe straps placed at the tourniquet below and above the elbow. Sergeant Ryan learned that the other person present was Bill Turgey. He had come upon the accident scene, had placed the toe straps on as a tourniquet to stop the severe bleeding. Sergeant Ryan asked Mr. Turgey to assist the victim to the ground while he retrieved his medical bag and specifically a tourniquet, which were carried in all of our sheriff's squad cars. When Sergeant Ryan returned, he placed the tourniquet above the victim's elbow, encouraged him to concentrate on his breathing and not his injuries. Shortly after, Deputy Kestner and Deputy Lannan arrived and assisted in the care of the victim. While they performed an overall assessment of his injuries, they observed a deep laceration in his thigh, which was packed with gauze and wrapped by Deputy Kestner. Deputy Kestner also applied an additional tourniquet to the arm just below the armpit, which stopped further bleeding. Deputy Lannan administered oxygen to the victim to help stabilize his breathing and prevent shock. The actions by all three deputies are highlighted by the excellent teamwork those accomplished to give the victim the best medical care they could provide on scene, along with the citizen's initial actions of applying a tourniquet from the use of those toe straps. These actions helped control the loss of additional bleeding and prevent the victim from going into shock. So at this time, I want to ask Deputy Lannan and Kestner and Sergeant Ryan, as well as Bill Turgey, to come up, and we'll present their awards here.
And then Claire's going to take the photo from there. Yep. Steve, go ahead. Rascal? Well, no worries. Cody, shake your hand here as well. Come on. I'll stand with you. If you come in close and shake hands for the nice stage photo there. There you go. Shake hands.
Please move closer. Closer.
Get a little tighter.
All right. Next, there's another one, sir. Thank you, sir. Deputy Kestner?
Let's get a back bow.
Shake hands. Stay with the shake. There we go. Deputy Lannan?
All right, there we go. Shake hands.
There we go. Sergeant Ryan? Do you want to say anything, Cody?
Hi, everyone. Cody, obviously, here. We figured that out. I am very, like, I think, after all this, these guys helped me out so much. I had no idea what it takes and goes into all this stuff. And I never came close to dying before until, and then, but these guys, they totally saved my life big time. They, obviously, it was why we're giving them a award right now. It was quite an experience, and if it wasn't for William to be there at first, or Bill, that would have been a whole different scenario because I didn't know I had the cut on my leg. And, you know, I didn't know what to think. My arm was just hanging off. I didn't know what to think about all that. But luckily, he was there to help me wrap my arm. He called 911, got all that stuff going. And I know you guys heard all the story here just a minute ago, but it was, I can't remember most of what happened. I just remember standing there and him helping me. So it was, it's interesting. It was really nice to be able to talk to him. And then there's all the sheriff guys, they came by to my house before, when, after a while, just to see me and everything. So I thought that was a really great experience in that I've been able to have some sort, you know, connection with them for a little bit, you know, being able to see them in a scenario where I'm not in the hospital, or I'm not bleeding out or nothing, you know? So anyways, I really appreciate everything you guys did for me. I'll never forget it. It's a huge part of my life. And so, yeah, thank you. Thank you, guys.
And that concludes their presentation. Any questions from the board or any follow-up?
Quick question.
Commissioner Beer.
Madam Chair, thanks. Does this mean that toe straps will now be in all of our sheriff deputy boards? All our toe straps in Minnesota. Listen to the first class.
Thank you, boy.
All right. Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, deputies. Thank you, Mr. Turgey. Congratulations, Cody. We're sure glad you're here and with us. This is a great, wonderful story of citizens working with government and doing what we need to do. So, thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we have Nate Fowler and Nick Ko from Congresswoman Angie Craig's office to introduce themselves and give us a little bit of information about the new Congresswoman and her staff and office in Minnesota.
Well, Madam Chair, members of the board, thanks so much for having us here. We just lost a little bit of our audience, but that's okay.
The million people on TV are still watching.
Right, exactly, exactly. I just want to say hello. My name is Nick Ko. I'm serving as district director for Congresswoman Angie Craig. And I also wanted to say thanks so much for welcoming us here this morning to get the chance to speak with you. I want to provide an update about what Congresswoman Craig has been up to so far and a little bit of information about our office. But first, I just wanted to introduce Nate Fowler, who is working as a community liaison in our office. And Nate's just going to provide a brief update about what he's been up to so far, who he's been meeting with, and what he hopes to do.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you so much for having us here. As Nick said, my name is Nate Fowler, and I work as a community liaison or an outreach staff member for the Congresswoman. In this role, my job is to go and attend local meetings, meet with local officials. I saw a familiar face in Mayor Briggs here from Prior Lake, as I saw him last week when I was meeting with their city manager. I plan on meeting with the superintendents of school systems here in Scott County and throughout the district, as well as city officials, county officials, and any other officials that I can meet with as well. I'd like to thank Madam Chair for allowing us to be here. I know I ran into you the other week, maybe two weeks ago now, at a township board meeting here. And again, I just wanted to thank you for letting me be here and allowing us to present. Thank you.
Nick, before you start again, it was Nate's first day on the job and his first-ever township meeting, and he had the pleasure of witnessing Louisville Township's meeting. And one of our local business owners asked me to tell you, Nate, later, that there's not often cursing at township meetings. That was an anomaly.
I found it very exciting.
Thank you, Nate. I appreciate it. So I just wanted to provide a really brief update about what Angie's been up to in the first couple of weeks, and then share a little bit of information about what the schedule ahead looks like for us. So Angie has been in office a little less than two weeks. She took office on January 3rd, 2019. We have opened a district office. It opened on January 23rd, and that district office is at 12940 Harriet Avenue South in Burnsville, Minnesota, Suite 238 in the Skyline Professional Building. Angie's number-one priority right now is ending the government shutdown that we know is impacting all parts of our state. And she's really excited to get to work for CD2, the second congressional district, I should say, to avoid jargon. This past weekend, she was back in Minnesota, and I believe on Saturday, she was in Hastings, visiting with some folks and some small business owners over there. And on Sunday, was at Fairview Hospital in Burnsville. One other quick update is that we're planning Representative Craig's first town hall meeting. The town hall meeting is going to be on Thursday, January 4th, at 7:00 PM at Burnsville High School. It's open to the public. And another thing that I should mention is that Congresswoman Craig is planning on having a town hall-style event every month, and we're planning on rotating counties. So you can expect there to be one in Scott County within the next six months, for sure. That's all that I have to say, other than to say thank you so much for letting us present today. We really appreciate it.
Wonderful. Thank you. Commissioner Ellerick.
Yeah, I would like to extend an invitation to both of you and the congressmen to what we call SCALE, Scott County Association for Leadership and Efficiency. It's a gathering of our elected officials, city council, township, county, tribal chairman, school board. We all gather monthly, the second Friday of every month, at Prior Lake City Hall at 7:30 in the morning. For example, this last Friday, I don't know if you were anywhere there, but we had probably 70 people there, and all our state representatives and state senators were there as well. So it's a way, actually, for you or the congresswoman to meet a large amount of elected officials all at one time. I mean, you know, so it's pretty well-used time. Send the invitation.
I just would like to follow up and say I plan on being there personally this coming February SCALE meeting. And I should also say it's a high priority of the office, the district office, to have the Congresswoman attend an upcoming meeting whenever her schedule is permitting.
Great.
Any other comments? Yes.
Give me that date of that town hall meeting. I think I missed it.
Yeah, absolutely. It's January 24th, Thursday, January 24th, at 7:00 PM at Burnsville High School.
Thank you so much.
Can I just, Madam Chair, this shutdown, I mean, what's your take on it? What's going to be the endgame on this whole deal here?
Yeah, you know, I wish I had the crystal ball to say for sure. I know that, you know, Congresswoman Craig is committed to doing everything she can to open the government, and the House has passed bills to open each of the individual agencies. And right now, we're waiting kind of on the Senate to take action on those bills. It's the same bill that they passed 100 to 0 a couple of weeks ago, but some things have shifted since then. We know that there's bipartisan support. It does include funding for border security, including fencing, additional personnel at points of entry. And so, you know, we've, the House has passed those bills. We're kind of waiting for the Senate to take action on them. I think we're all really hopeful that it's going to be open soon.
Just to follow up, I look at how much debt we have. What do we have for debt for this country? $2 trillion or something?
I think it's 20.
$20 trillion. And we're stuck on $5 billion? I mean, I, and I knew that. I'm just saying, we're giving so much money to other countries. It's unbelievable. I don't know. Maybe I'm wrong here, but let's pass that along. We should open up, because it's starting to affect things that we do. Even people I know, it's starting to, I have a subcontractor cousin that's affected by this deal.
Absolutely. I'll make sure that we pass those comments along to the Congresswoman.
Commissioner Ellerick.
You know, as I watch what's going on in Washington, not just this occasion, but generally, I'm so thankful that we serve on a generally nonpartisan way with, as county commissioners, it's not a partisan office. Because we're all the time working to get things done and compromising. And it is kind of disgusting to see either side unwilling to compromise, you know, unwilling to compromise, to come to a middle ground. And it's like, both sides don't want to agree just because they don't want to be perceived as giving in or losing something, or they don't, this lack of cooperation, I think you're going to find the mood is going to grow in the country, and the people, the citizens are getting really tired of a non-cooperative Washington on both sides.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. And I'm sure we'll have the opportunity next week, the Congresswoman is going to attend chair vice chair meeting, and we are going to post that meeting so the other commissioners can attend to talk about some of the initiatives we think are most important. So thank you so much for coming here today. Thank you for opening so quickly the lines of communication with the Congresswoman and her office. We do appreciate it, and we look forward to a really good relationship.
Thanks so much for having us. Really appreciate it.
All right. Next on the agenda, we have the presentation from the Prior Lake Spring Lake Watershed District. Ms. Diane Lynch is here to provide that, and welcome. Thank you for being here. Oh, and Mr. Corrigan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have the pleasure of introducing our district administrator as the current president. And I will give that office up in February, and also begin my third term. And thank you for your confidence in letting me continue to work on the board for another three years as we implement our 10-year management plan. So it'll be, that was my priority, was to be part of actually getting that plan finished this year and on the works. And in that case, we work closely with the WMO and with SWCD to make sure our plans are working together and take advantage of the opportunity of working with the county. What we've learned since 2013 is that water volume and water quality are very much a part of each other. Water quality on its own is a challenging, is challenging. I'll just leave it at that. But certainly, we learned during 2014 with the flood, that water volume has a big part in how the water quality throughout the system is impacted. And the county has worked with us closely on a flood plan, including County Road 21 improvements. We're hoping to be ready for the next flood through a series of recommendations that came out of the flood plan. So I think we're in good shape. We've had the opportunity over the last six years, pretty much, five years, to bring a very professional staff on board, and it's my pleasure today to introduce our district administrator. I also wanted to just recognize the partnerships we have, not only with the county, but with the cities of Prior Lake, Savage, and Shakopee, Spring Lake Township, and Sand Creek Township, and with the SMSC on a lot of the work that we do, in addition to the WMO and the SWCD. And also want to just thank Commissioner Beer for sitting through many workshops and board meetings. He's been a welcome addition to our team working at the district. So with that, it's my pleasure to introduce our district administrator, Diane Lynch. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corrigan, and thank you for your service.
Well, good morning. As you know, I'm Diane Lynch. I'm the district administrator of the Prior Lake Spring Lake Watershed District, and I'm delighted to have an opportunity to speak to you today about what we've been doing over the last year. The Prior Lake, Spring Lake Watershed District is really, in the world of watersheds, is small. It's only 42 square miles. Our watershed district is the same size, however, as Capital Region Watershed District. They are totally an urban watershed district. We are both a rural and urban watershed district. In fact, 60% of our land area is in what is the rural area, the upper watershed. So this is the area that drains down into the Prior Lake, Spring Lake Outlet Channel that you've heard a lot about. And frankly, prior to the district being formed, it was a landlocked area, and we were formed in 1980 by a citizen petition saying, "We need to stop all this flooding." And so we thought the 2014 flood was bad. It was a whole lot worse back then, so. Our levy is the same this year as it was last year. The board is very proud of that. It's $1.8 million. Previously, to me becoming on the watershed district staff, we were able to have a surplus, and we were able to use that surplus for a variety of projects. Once I came on board, it was no longer available. So basically, what we levy is our budget. We do get grants, as our chair said. We get grants from the state, Board of Water and Soil Resources predominantly, but we do get some DNR money. And we have had the opportunity to work with you in Scott County on aquatic invasive species. You get a grant from the state for that, and we've worked really well with your staff to take care of some curly-leaf pondweed issues, in fact, that we have in Spring Lake and Prior Lake. We're right now working with Melissa Bachman on dealing with inspections possibly for Upper Prior, so that we can prevent more of the invasives coming in. Our budget is made up of a variety of entities, as our chair indicated to you. The tax base that we get the most benefit from would be the city of Prior Lake, which is about 71% of taxation is raised there. The next is the city of Savage, it's 16%, and then down to about 10% with Spring Lake Township. How things get done, our chair mentioned to you how we get things done. We really rely on our partners to help us. And not only do we have the five managers that you appoint to the board, we also have six staff. We work with the Scott SWCD a lot. They help us with monitoring and regulatory work. They help us with our farmer-led council and our cost share. We have consultants that we work with. Watershed districts are required to have a citizens advisory committee, and our committee has about eight really active members that meet monthly. When our watershed district was first formed, they were an integral part of putting our first water resources management plan together. They have continued to be active and, again, meet monthly and provide feedback on what the district board is doing, and participate in a number of volunteer activities. We also have technical advisory committees, as you do, and that's comprised of staff of the different entities in the area who help us with a variety of projects, such as, right now, we're going through a rules revision, and also, as our chair said, water resources management plan is being updated. And I know that you've just been through that also in your county. And then we partner, of course, with a variety of jurisdictions. These are all the different activities that I'm going to be talking to you about, both programs and projects. For programs, we have that farmer-led council, and I mentioned that earlier. It was established in March 2013. It was primarily set up to provide a dialogue between the farming and non-farming community. We have about eight farmers who are actively involved in the council, meet on a monthly basis except during times of planting and harvesting. You might think, well, eight's not a whole lot. There are about 30 farmers in the district. However, these eight hold about 70% of the land. So we do have the majority of the landowners of the ag property involved in our farmer-led council, and they have done a lot. They have put together programs on cover crops and, in fact, are participating in them. Variable rate application. They've been involved in some more innovative products like water quality inlets, as well as alum-treated biologs. We have involved them in our 2016 flood study that we did. We wanted to find out what the impacts of the 2014 flood were on them. And you probably know there were major impacts. There were a lot of crops that were lost and livestock that were displaced. We have a new program, which we're real proud of. It's called the Lake Friendly Farm Program. And this is something like you probably are aware of the state program called Ag Certainty. And this is a modified version, but what it... like water quality inlets, as well as alum-treated biologs. We have involved in them, involved them in our 2016 flood study that we did. We wanted to find out what the impacts of the 2014 flood were on them. And you probably know, there were major impacts. There were a lot of crops that were lost and livestock that were displaced. We have a new program, which we're real proud of. It's called the Lake Friendly Farm Program. And this is something like you probably are aware of, the state program called Ag Certainty. And this is a modified version, but what it does is it takes a whole farming approach and invites the farmers to put in place different procedures that are not only good for his or her business, but also good for the environment. We have an event coming up on January 30th that you'll all be invited to as well, to recognize two farmers who have done a great job for this. We have cost share assistance. We are participating in the Scott County Cost Share Program. And as you know, there are just a variety of programs of all sorts of practices that farmers can put in place, as well as in the urban environment, such as rain gardens, rain barrels, et cetera. We use what's called the stormwater assessment, Upper Pryor Stormwater Assessment, for determination of what good, what properties would be really good opportunities for us for using cost share. And we count on our SWCD partners to go out and meet with those farmers, because they have great relationships with them. Since 2014, we've actually spent about $57,000 in our two townships on cost share projects, which involve nutrient management, water and sediment control basins, as well as others. The watershed district is involved in lake monitoring, stream monitoring. We actually go out there and take samples. We also involve volunteers to do the sampling for us, and then we send the information out to a lab. We keep track of precipitation. And then also, when we do projects, we check to see how well we're doing with those projects. This is just a map of the district with the different monitoring sites that we have, and you can see that they vary all over the jurisdictions of our partners. The results, so, the monitoring period is between June and October in any given year. And Spring Lake is at, below the phosphorus goal, so the goals are set by the Pollution Control Agency. The sixty parts per million is what we're allowed for phosphorus to meet the goal, to be a water body that's not impaired. Spring Lake and Upper Pryor, as well as now Pike and Fish, are considered impaired lakes. We've been working on Spring and Upper Pryor for many years. Upper Pryor is right at that cusp, so we find that in the summertime, there are problems with algae on Upper Pryor. But generally speaking, it stays right under that goal of sixty parts per million. The chlorofluor A and the secadis goals, both of those are indicators of how much, how clear the area is, how clear the lake water is. And some of them we're struggling with, and others we're not. Conservation, yes?
Can I, so, probably that's just separated by that bridge on 21 there. How can those numbers be so different on some of those? Am I looking at that correctly?
Between like upper and lower?
Yeah.
A lot of it has to do with, the phosphorus is actually in the bottom of the lake, the sediment, so it's being held there. We have issues of carp in all, you know, most of the lakes. And Upper Pryor and Spring particularly, we've had major problems. And carp have a habit of going and stirring up the sediment at the bottom, and it suspends it in the water column. And that makes the phosphorus available to algae growth. So, that's one of the big reasons. It's the phosphorus that's actually on the bottom of the lake. Upper Pryor has a lot more issues than lower.
Okay. And then last year, they had that guy out there with those things, putting that stuff in. Were you there?
Oh, yep, the alum treatment. That was in Spring.
Do we have the numbers between before and after with that yet? Got that coming?
Well, actually, before, it was unfortunate, close to ninety, and it's now down to about forty-one. So, it does make a difference. When we did the first treatment in 2013, Spring Lake was up to about a hundred and forty, yeah, it was quite high. So, it does make a difference. The board committed to three alum treatments, and the next one will be three to five years, just depending on how the water quality is.
Diane, you might mention the cost of those treatments.
Yeah, the treatments are expensive. The first one was five hundred thousand. The next two are about two fifty each. So, it's about a million dollars for those. And they are temporary, unfortunately. That means that we'll have to go back after the third one at some point. So, conservation easements, we put conservation easements around wetlands, primarily when there's development. We have a, a lot of them. We have thirty-seven easements with a hundred and fifty-five landowners around the district. There are two, actually, that we have in Scott County. One is actually at Three Rivers Park District, at Spring Lake Regional Park. And then the other is around the Highway Department. And we have staff that go out and monitor those easements to make sure that the water bodies are protected. We do have a permit program. However, we have equivalency agreements with the city of Prior Lake, Savage, and with Scott County, which means that your ordinances are equivalent to our rules. So, you're actually doing the permitting. We don't get involved in that. We do get involved, however, if you have your own project that is going through the district. You can't permit yourself, because that's a conflict of interest. And then we do get involved. We are doing rule revisions, as I mentioned to you. The last time we substantially reviewed our rules was in 2003. They're on our website. They are confusing to people that are going to be developing in the area. We also have a mandate from the 2016 flood study that says that we are going to be doing something about holding water back, as our chair indicated. We need to hold water back in the upper watershed, as well as do the best we can with stormwater in the urban area. So, we are revising those rules. Your staff have been actively involved in this with our technical advisory committee. I would anticipate we'll have some draft rules available in a few months. And then our water resources management plan, that's kind of what we live by. That has all of our programs and projects for the next ten years, and we are reviewing that as well right now. And we, all of our partners are a part of that process. We do do projects with our citizens advisory committee, as I mentioned to you. And I know some of you have been actively involved in our clean water cleanups. Those are basically held in the spring and the fall. And the purpose of those is to get the community involved in raking for the lake. So, leaves, when they get into the water, actually decompose and release phosphorus. And we know phosphorus is the bad guy, and it'll cause algae growth. So, we are also getting them involved in removing buckthorn, which is an invasive species, which has huge ramifications on native vegetation. And it kind of amazes me, but we have people that come to these cleanups and only want to do buckthorn removal. And, you know, they're actually taking these big pinchers and pulling them up by the roots, or cutting them off. It's just, you know, they're like trees. So, you know, again, I'm quite amazed. And we, the last one, in October, we pulled out one whole truckload of buckthorn. We have an integrated pest management program. And the pest here we're talking about is carp. We have to do a variety of things to manage carp. We're never going to eradicate carp. It's not going to happen. But we do that by, first of all, tracking the movement. We do electrofishing, and you might have seen that, where you actually stun the fish. You pull them up in a net. You get everything. So, you get the carp, and you get the native species. But we try to figure out what the population is in any given area. And then we try to put up carp barriers to prevent them from spawning. They like to spawn in wetlands. They like to spawn in small areas, which are safe for them. But if you make them lay their eggs in the middle of the lake, the predators can get after them. And the predators we're talking about are bluegills. The bluegills have scientifically proven that they love carp eggs. But you've got to get a lake healthy enough so that you have more bluegill to do the eating of the eggs. So, we have to do a variety of things, including the seign events, which I'll talk to you a little bit about in a moment. So, this is a YouTube video. I would highly recommend it. You could just Google carp video on YouTube. It's really fun. We had one of our interns put it together, and it's a way, it's a comical way of looking at seigning. But it shows you how much work this stuff is. And actually, in the wintertime, and we're hoping to do a couple more seigns on Upper Pryor, you actually, they cut a hole in the ice, and they thread the net through that. And then they have to manually pull that net up, which is waterlogged and has fish in it. And we pulled up thirty-seven tons last year in Upper Pryor. So, that's a lot of weight for them to be pulling up. And generally, a seign costs about $5,000, unless there's a market for the fish. And then we don't have to pay that much, or we pay very little. And you wonder, what's the market? Well, actually, Nebraska last year wanted to have some carp for their ponds that they were using for fishing contests. And then they actually have gone to Chicago and New York for the fish eggs, you know. And we've also had people want to eat them. And they actually are really good. We had our water resources director in Prior Lake smoke them, and we presented it to the board. And it doesn't taste like chicken. It tastes like salmon. It really is good, but it's really a bony fish, so it's hard to get around, I guess. That's why people don't like to eat them a lot.
Is that afterwards, we're going to have that?
Well, we can make sure you're going to have some. So, we have public infrastructure projects that are part of our budget, where we help with, and they're primarily street projects. This is a list of all the different townships, what it is that they wanted us to work with them on. And we have a budget of a hundred thousand. We have a hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of projects. So, we're not going to be able to do all of them, but we hope to do a substantial part this year. Our ferrochloride facility in wetland, you're probably very familiar with this. This is at thirteen and 282. This was a system that was put in in the eighties. The goal here is to do something like with the alum treatment. Ferrochloride will grab onto the phosphorus and bring it down to the bottom of the stream. We have, it's called a desilt pond, where the water will flow. It'll get, the water's flowing, it'll get charged with ferrochloride, then it will go over a weir, and it will go into a desilt pond, which where the sediment that has the phosphorus on it will just drop to the bottom of the stream. And then the water will go on into Spring Lake. And it's very successful for us. We do run into problems when there's really high water. Then it does actually, the chemical with the water goes over the weir rather than around as it should. But that's just naturally, it gets too high.
Diane, this is treating the water in County Dish 13.
That's correct. Yes. The Prior Lake Outlet Channel, that's something our chair mentioned to you. You're probably very familiar with it. It's that relief valve for flooding in the lakes area. It's over seven miles. It discharges into the Minnesota River. We have a new outlet structure that was basically installed in 2010. It's very effective. The channel, we inspect on a weekly basis. There are some areas we inspect more often than not. We're trying to make sure that the culverts aren't blocked with debris, and that there's not problems with bank erosion. FEMA projects, so, as you experienced in 2014, we had a lot of damage down that outlet channel as well. And we had downed trees. That project is done. We had a sediment delta that formed over by County Road 21. That's been taken care of. We had a number of culverts that broke. And here's one, it's a Ganya culvert. That's been fixed. The one thing that we're waiting for is the bank erosion, which is, of course, the most expensive part of the project. It's about $750,000. And for one reason or another, we haven't been able to do it. Now, just about a month ago, I was so delighted, we had a call with FEMA and Homeland Security, which has been terrific to work with. And FEMA said, you know, if all goes according to plan here, we think we'll get to your approval by February. It's like, yay! And then we had the partial shutdown. So, now we have no idea when we're going to be able to do this project. So, like you, you know, it's like, yeah, this has trickled down to the local level, and we're all suffering as a result of it. Flood storage projects, as you can see, we've done a number of them through the years. The most recent one was the twelve, in 2014, the 1217 Wetland. You were a partner with us on that. That is a project that has three different basins, which are treating the water before it goes into Spring Lake. And it's been a very successful project. We're also working right now on one, which is Sutton Lake, which is at the head of Dish 13. And we're working with the landowners on that to put in a berm to actually hold the water, also to put in some water control structures to slow the water down. And then we've been told there are beaver problems there. The landowners have been managing themselves for fifteen years. And they said, okay, if we give you permission to go ahead with this, we want you to take care of those beavers. So, we're working with your staff on putting together some kind of a beaver management plan. So, you know, there's never a time when you don't have work to do. So, this is what happens when you move forward here. This is the seign that I told you about in 2018, with all the weight that we got out of the, from the seigning, and goes to show you some of the carp. Carp can live till age eighty. One was that old that was pulled out of Starling Lake by one of our partners. The oldest one we pulled out is about forty-five years old. So, has anybody had children that wanted, like, release their little goldfish into the lake, or koi? People do that. And we pulled out a koi that was that big. Koi and goldfish are a type of carp. So, you know, we try to encourage people. I know, you don't want to kill anything, but it's not a solution to put it down your toilet, or to put it, you know, out into the lake, because it causes problems. This is, yes.
One quick note, on that, what about ice fishing and minnows? Some people say, don't put the minnows, just let them be on the ice and...
I think that's primarily because of invasive species. They're concerned about...
You know, I was curious about this, Mo.
But no, I don't think that they're a form of a carp or anything like that.
Right, right, right. No, yeah.
But I think you're not supposed to leave anything behind, nothing, not even worms or anything. So, our Spring Lake alum treatment, we already talked about that one. And then Lower Pryor, Lower Pryor is not impaired. So, we're trying to keep it off the impaired list. And so, we're doing a number of projects for that. And one of them was Fish Point Park, which we finished a couple of years ago. That one, we had restored prairie. We put in a water control structure. We put in an iron sand filter and wetland. That one is very successful. And then we just did one with the city of Prior Lake on Sandpoint Beach, which is to, the city actually put in quite a bit of money to expand two basins that they had, which were not working. We helped with prairie restoration, and then another iron enhanced sand filter as well. So, questions?
Go ahead, Commissioner Beer.
I guess I would just say that, you know, I am the liaison to that group, and I'm more familiar with the managers and Diane than the rest of the staff, but a very passionate, dedicated group of folks. So, I just wanted to publicly say that.
Thank you.
And I think, and also, I don't know if I've done this publicly, but Mary Ann Brightbach, I think, rolled off a year or two ago?
A year, yeah.
A year ago?
Yep.
Super passionate, super dedicated. And I see her at multiple meetings. I think she's still working in the advisory capacity.
Yes, yeah, Citizens Advisory Committee, yeah.
And we've got another very dedicated manager rolling off soon here, Woody Spitzmuller, who is so involved with local goings-on that I'm thinking he's got a secret office in City Hall. I'm not a hundred percent sure. That can't be, you know, he would neither confirm or deny. But I just wanted to publicly say thank you to them, certainly, and thank you to the public, to the chairman, president, maybe giving that up in February, but to our current staff and managers. So, thank you for your passion and dedication.
Well, thank you so much. We really appreciate that. And we appreciate you coming to those meetings. And the last one, we were going over our governance manual, kind of like watching paint dry. And he stayed there for the whole meeting, which was great. We really appreciated that.
I thought maybe there was going to be some smoked sock...
Madam Chair, I just have one comment, and I think I brought this up here before. Mostly, you know, the carp were brought over here in the late 1800s. You know, they went to all these railroad trestles where there was waterways and let out, I don't know, a number of fingerlings, because they wanted a cheap food source for people coming from Sweden or whatever. And it worked.
It did.
It worked really good. So, there's carp everywhere now.
Yes. Yes. Absolutely. The same thing would happen with Canadian geese. I mean, you know, yeah. So, you know, we have these good intentions, but they backfire. So, that's why, when we're dealing with aquatic invasive species, we really need to be aware of what we're bringing in and what they're bringing in with them. So...
We shouldn't bring in anything.
That's really true. Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
One last, if and when you are able to schedule when you go with the carp hunt?
Yes.
I would encourage you to invite all of us, because I've been to one of those events, and it was insane.
And why was it insane?
Honestly, because it came out of the seign. But I had, I got, I was showing a picture to my colleagues left and right here of one of these carp. I mean, these scales are like guitar picks. They're ginormous. And there is a market for these things. We want to get rid of them. Other people want to pay for them, so...
It's a win-win.
Exactly. So, I would just encourage you to invite this body, because it is very educational and interesting, to say the least.
Ah, great. Thank you.
There's no further questions? Thank you for the report. I personally, I just think your organization does such a great job involving citizens on the advisory groups, on the farmer advisory group. Everybody's moving in the same direction. And all over the county, we hear about water quality as an increased concern and interest of our citizens. So, to be able to look to the Prior Lake, Spring Lake Watershed and say, "Look at this great example we have going, doing such good work in a very efficient way." So...
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. All right. We are on to committee reports and commissioner updates. Commissioner Ulrich, would you start us off there?
Commissioner Ulrich, would you start us off there?
All right, on the 8th, I attended the Community Development Agency. The 10th, the fish meeting. Scale on the 11th, we had a, like I referred to it earlier, a tremendous turnout at Scale. We had, I would think, 70. The room was jammed, our delegation, and we went through our legislative agenda, presented that to our group. 14th, the Service Delivery Committee. And one of the biggest things going on with Scale right now in the Service Delivery Committee is what we're calling Scale Reboot. It is kind of to refine and re-energize and how we want to go forward as Scale. There's going to be a Survey Monkey poll coming out with probably 15 questions, I suppose, something like that. It's very important that we all fill that out and give feedback, and that'll help guide Scale in the future. 14th, again, MTA Management Committee. That's the end of my reporting.
Thank you. Commissioner Beard?
On the 9th, I attended the MICAB Board Meeting in St. Paul. Heard about the preview of what they expected in the upcoming legislative session. On the 10th, I attended the Mosquito Control Board Meeting where we had our reorganization. And Commissioner Wolf was thanked for two years of being chair, and he's no longer the chair. Mr. Workman, I think, from Dakota is the new chair. The 11th, attended the Scale Legislative Get Together at Prior Lake City Hall. On the 14th, the Scale Service Delivery Meeting that Commissioner Ulrich just referenced. One thing that was discussed there that I thought was a super idea was, we talked about, you know, Scale, usually one or two appointees, representatives from each city tend to attend. The idea was floated that maybe we have an annual meeting, banquet, reception, or something where every elected official from township, school districts, all and up is invited once a year. That would be several, a couple hundred people, so we couldn't do it at Prior Lake City Hall, but maybe make some sort of an annual event out of it. Stay tuned to see how that unfolds. And yesterday, on the 14th, also, I attended the Transportation Alliance Board of Directors Meeting in St. Paul. And they talked about their, among other things, the upcoming Washington trip in June, which is going to be about the same time as the 169 Coalition Washington trip. So we might be doubling up on that as well. Stay tuned, more on that to follow. That's my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Beard?
Thank you. On the 8th, Prior Lake, Spring Lake watershed. And then later that night, Shock, if you had their annual meeting with their swearing-in of two new city councilors, as well as the mayor was re-sworn in again, or sworn in. Place was packed, standing room only. Commissioner Beard was also there, and he may add that as a footnote. It was just a good night to be there to represent, and, I mean, literally, standing room only. On the 9th, attended my first MESB Board Meeting, where Commissioner Wolf had the corner, the whole corner office slash chair at the table. Boy, he was large and in charge. And then later that afternoon, also attended the Live Learner and Post-Secondary Meeting, which is always, really enjoy that, that committee. On the 10th was Fish, talking about sexual violence and how pervasive that is, as we all know. So it was more eye-opening than it already was. On the 11th, attended the Scale Meeting, which I was happy to hear about the reboot, not rebuild, just a reboot. We've got great things going on there that just need a little TLC and a little remodel. And that is my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wolf?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the 8th, I met with some folks down in Planning and zoning, zoning, about a few projects going on. That night, I was out at New Market Township, and the big topic out there, the last month and a half, two months, has been the YMCA and possibly relocating out there. People are concerned about the traffic and whatnot. I'll see where that all shakes out, but it's very contentious out there with that. On the 9th, the MESB Metropolitan Emergency Service Board. That evening, the Academies of Shakopee over at the high school. On the 10th, the I-35W, that one, then the Metropolitan Mosquito Control, our new board chair, Mr. Workman from Dakota County. Then Spring Lake Township and Alco Newmarket had their monthly meetings. Alco Newmarket had a number of swearing-ins that night. And then a week and a half from now, they'll be appointing a new city council member because the mayor, Joe Julius, won his race, and so they need to fill his seat. And the Scale Meeting on the 11th, and then the 14th last night, Planning and Zoning Met, and a number of projects going on out there. They're starting to expand back in the early 2000s, I think 2004, 2005. Things kind of slowed down and stopped, and those lots that had sat for five, 10, 15 years are now mostly all built. And so there's a demand for more spots, and people are building. And some of these folks that are out in the townships became accustomed to the land sitting empty and, you know, putting, building, and growing things that were conducive to the way things are. And now, a new neighbor's going to come in and kind of mess up their view. I'm sorry, but they own the land, you know, whoever owns the land, they can sell it. And that's, I always think, you know, even myself, I moved into a spot, maybe somebody didn't want me there at some point. But that's how it is. Unless you own the view, you don't own it. So anyhow, that's my report. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Wolf. For my report, on January 8th, I had my monthly meeting with the county administrator. January 9th, I also attended the Shakopee High School Showcase and the Academies of Shakopee resignation ceremony. We had a lot of staff there, especially at the Career Fair, which I thought was really great, representing all the different possible careers that are involved in county government. So that was a great event, and really well-attended, the showcase and the Career Fair. Later that evening, I went to the Minnesota Chamber of Commerce Sessions Priorities Dinner. Commissioner Beard was also there. Heard from the governor and the legislative leaders. I thought the tone there was a little more positive than in past years between leadership. So we'll see if that continues. On January 10th, I also attended the Fish Monthly Meeting. January 11th, the Scale Meeting. It was, as I think someone noted, great that our entire legislative delegation was there. Everyone who has a district that is at all in Scott County was there, and that was, I think, it's been a while since everybody's been able to attend the same meeting. It was good to have them there. Commissioner Ulrich, thank you for bringing that up to Congresswoman Craig's staff. Great idea. It'd be nice to get some federal officials there sometimes. And then finally, this morning, before the board meeting, I had my monthly meeting with Health and Human Services Director Pam Selvig to talk about all the human services issues, especially in front of legislature this season. Other than that, just two other things. Number one, I already mentioned that the Chair-Vice Chair Meeting will be posted next week. We'll meet at 8:00, but the Congresswoman will be coming at 9:00. So that 9:00 o'clock timeframe to be able to talk with her, probably especially about a couple of our priority items that we would like her to help us make progress on. And then number two, I will ask staff to keep us updated as to county impacts that the shutdowns having on us. As I think you're all made aware, we've already, over the last weekend, had some overtime and some things that needed to be done to get the February SNAP benefits able to go out. So it's impacting us dollars and cents-wise. And I think it's important for us to know that and be able to communicate that. So I'll ask staff to continue to keep us updated on that. County Administrator Updates?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You will see a Scale mail, all of you, that will have the survey. So look for Scale mail. It's really important for the reboot that you fill that out. We're going to talk about that information at an upcoming services meeting in preparation for the full scale. So anybody that gets Scale mail, please fill that out. We will be closed Monday for the holiday, Martin Luther King Day. And then on January 29th, we'll meet at the Prior Lake Library for the work session on